Let Kurt arrive a little bit later. Welcome tonight. The first order of business is to stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Three minutes. It'll be right.
Oh, three? Okay, so we're gonna mark Kurt as present, and with that, everyone is present. So we're gonna move on to item number two on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda as presented or amended.
Who?
Second?
Sorry.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It is as presented. Brandon.
I was first, Derek's second.
Okay. Yep, and I'm gonna just keep going here. So number three, actually, is...
Oh, Brandon.
Item number three on the agenda is a very important one. It's district recognitions, and with this, I'm gonna call Ms. Hesch up and do the honors.
Good evening, board. To represent the board, I'd like to introduce Deanne Toddier. She's going to recognize our spelling bee champions from Eagleview from grade second, our second, third, and fourth champions. So I let her talk about the process. She and Mrs. Wolter were the ones who coordinated it for the entire school, and we are deeply indebted to them for their time for that, so.
So thank you for that.
Yeah.
Scores.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have three students here today who are the Eagleview champions for the spelling bee, which took place in the beginning of March. And these students had to, first of all, take a written test with all four grade level students, and it was thirty words to start with, and now three of them had perfect scores on the written test to qualify for the spelling bee. And then they did an oral spelling bee with, there were six students in each grade level, and they had to spell five rhymes of words. And they were all the champions in their grade levels. So I'd like to introduce them to you. In second grade, we have Lake Roland.
Hello.
And in third grade, we have Brian Husaugen, and he's in my class. And in fourth grade, we have Quinn Trattier. And I'd also like to say that Quinn was also the winner when she was in second grade and third grade. So she's at the end of her reign at elementary school now, so. Yeah, so they just were excellent spellers and set a good example for the rest of the students in their grade levels, so.
So. Does anyone have any questions for the budding scholars?
No, but I'd like to say congratulations.
I have one, if no one else. So anybody, what was the most difficult word you came across?
Lake, wanna go first?
Bees.
All of them were easy.
They were all easy, so?
What was your winning word?
Mermaid.
Mermaid, alright, good for you.
Aaron, how?
I guess it was the hardest, but, yeah.
Okay, how about you, Aaron?
The hardest one was cellar.
Cellar?
Like the basement cellar.
Oh, so S-E-L-L-E-R?
No.
Got it. So good job.
How, Aaron, how did you use that word?
Well, C-E-L-L-A-R.
Absolutely.
And I must commend Mr. Husaugen for his determination, because last year, you struggled a little bit, and then this year, you must have studied it a ton, and you blew away the other competitors. I was impressed with your clutch performance. You did a great job. Nice job with all three of you guys.
How about you, Quinn?
Um, I'm bulbous.
What? Bulbous, wow. Could you use that in a sentence? That's a toughie. It means like bulging or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Like a bulbous red nose, you said, right?
Oh, right.
So, alright.
Congratulations, guys.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I apologize for being late. I did not want to miss anything tonight, this presentation, so congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. But for Quinn, I'm sure you get all your smarts from mom.
Okay, well, we're last subject. How many of your siblings have won? All of them?
I don't know. I have, I have two.
Yeah, you have two.
So Lake, you have two other siblings that have won this?
No.
Or no. I thought you meant that they pledged to the parents.
Siblings, yeah.
Did you have?
Yeah.
Yeah, Quinn's following the line of everybody else.
There you go. Well, good luck next year.
Good job, Al.
And good luck in fifth grade.
Good job.
Congratulations.
So, let's see.
I'm gonna see your dad.
Yeah, and why don't you take the next?
Not with us tonight, but also under district recognitions, is Dan Skoll. He was voted the teacher of the year for 2014-15, and he was awarded that and our May sixth employee recognition banquet. Was about the shade of Karen's shirt up in front of everybody.
That was a great reaction.
It was great.
But it's no doubt a well-deserved honor for Dan. He teaches like seventeen different subjects all the time. He does a yearbook and reports for the construction kit. He's just a top-notch guy, so. That was an honor. That was voted upon by the rest of the teachers in the district, so it's, I think, been a teacher. I would say that that's probably usually the most important honor, is when your colleagues are saying you're bad and out of the park. So congratulations to Dan Skoll, their teacher of the year for 2014-15.
And if I may, just congratulations to all the nominees. There were quite the lineup up there. And so, Dan obviously was the winner, and I had some little clip that I'm gonna let...
It was most impressive though, that Michelle, when she was introducing, he was the only male candidate, and she never let he slip out of her mouth when she was going through all the characters.
But anyway, congratulations to all of them. So on to number four, reports and information items, and student council report, probably not. That's fine. Was tonight their last meeting, or today their last meeting, Chuck?
They reorganized it, organized it, and they held elections. And so, I had it off the top of my head, but I do remember that Mike Barbara Mills is the president. I think Ms. Mom is the vice president.
Okay. So they're in good hands.
They are. So elections have been hosted, and they've elected their representative council.
Alright, well, we'll just wait for them to resurface probably in September then.
Are they still clear on the six o'clock, seven o'clock thing?
They are, they are.
No, it's okay.
Probably the transition, they weren't sure who's supposed to come, so I will remind them. You'll see them in June.
Well, and at six-thirty, I'm yelling in my kid's room, "Don't you have student council?" He goes, "No, I got a text, I don't have to go." And I was like, "Sorry to wake you up, so..." Anyway, superintendent report is next.
Yeah, I do have a few things I wanna update our public, our staff, and our board on. First of all, tonight, midnight tonight is the deadline for the Minnesota Legislature to come to an agreement with the governor, and at this point, it's anybody's guess. The conference committee from the Senate and the House have done their job and put a proposal on the desk of Governor Dayton, and he's threatening to veto that. We'll see. So what it means for us, if he signs it, it goes into law. If he chooses to not sign it and just wait for three days, it still goes into law without his signature. So I think that's a very feasible option. Obviously, he's not happy about not having early childhood on the table as part of the package. I will say that I think the education conference committee proposal is good to outstate Minnesota in general. They've come around to a few things. A formula increases of one and a half and two percent, that's in their bill. Thirty point seven million dollars over two years for school readiness, and the same number for early learning scholarships. That's good, and I'm very happy to see that long-term facility maintenance was included in that, with thirty-two million dollars next year, and then it'll grow over the next three years. Something else that the district could consider taking advantage of is expansion of Q Comp, and then the reading corps continues to grow, which we do take advantage of here at Eagleview. So there are some good things in the bill for us. It's come in the better direction from where it was a month and a half ago, which is positive. We'll see what the governor chooses to do. If he, if he vetoes this, then he's making statements about possibly not reconvening the legislature right away, but instead trying to take on kind of a campaign approach to this early childhood thing he's so passionate about, which makes me sweat a bit, because that would stall everything for a month, however long he chooses to do that, and the possibility of shutting down MDE for the first part of the next fiscal year. So the stakes are pretty high, when you think about it. I don't think any of us enjoy watching the political posturing on stuff like this, if they're us at hostage, and our kids at hostage, but it's the never-ending debate of democracy, right?
Couple, can we get a couple quick comments while you're on that subject?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I think he's in a pretty strong position to have to veto. I mean, he's been so strong and vocal about this, that I don't know how he can back away politically. The other thing is that, I've not read it as closely as you probably have, but is there a risk of capitalization then, within restructuring the funding of this particular proposal? I mean, I could get to the, and in that case, the thirty-two nine, or whatever you suggested to the line item that was for...
Facility?
Yeah, facility. Is that, now that state-funded money, that we don't have to go to these measures that we have available to us now, and we'll continue to save, is that money over above that we can...
It's a vehicle for us to levy local property owners.
So it is still that?
Yeah.
So in other words, they've said, "Here, you guys can now levy your..."
The cost to the state is because of significantly increased equalization from the state, so they decreased the ramification on the local property owner.
Okay.
So it's a, you know, it's not perfect, but it's a lever for us.
Right.
And it's a lever for us down the road when we need it. It's not something you jump on. When you have capital need, you can leverage it.
I just wanna have clarification that that's another wonderful means that our representatives have given us to levy right without...
Right. To answer your first question, Kurt, if the governor vetoes the legislation, then what's been put on the table, just pretend it doesn't exist anymore. They have to start over and write a new bill. So your question of a cannibalization, they could, everything's on the table at that point, and they start over from scratch, so we'll see.
It's not a line item, you know, I mean, it's a vote, yeah.
Well, he has some authority on that.
Okay.
But like I said, we'll see in the next twelve hours where he decides to go with that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that item? Just an update on negotiations. The school board and our teachers met on the fifteenth, I think is the date here. And it was last week. And we reviewed our base costing process. We worked on the Schedule C task force process. We've all kind of agreed we have to get at Schedule C, but we were mapping out a process to do that. So that's what we were doing last week. And we will meet again on the twenty-first. I think I confidently say that we have good momentum and good relationship going on in there. I'm optimistic about that process. Hita, just an update. Last month, I shared with the board that we were going out for bid on health insurance because of the Health Insurance Transparency Act. We requested five different bids. We've got three. One of the vendors chose not to submit a bid to us. So we opened the bids on April twenty-seventh, and we had a representative or two from our teachers group and from two-eight-four there. And we will now reconvene this week to dive into the details. We were waiting for our consultant, Resource Training and Solutions, to give us the tool to lay out these three insurance policies, so we can look at them as apples to apples as possible. So they provided spreadsheets and all the data, and now we'll sit down and analyze that this week. Once we've done that, you should be aware, board, that once we've done that, and we've said, "Alright, this is the one, that's best for our employees," then we go public with that information, that decision. And we're intending to do that by June first, because then we need to think, Jenny, it's like two weeks, two weeks out in the public before we would approve it at the June fifteenth board meeting. So that's the timeline. Expect an action item next month, and know that in the room, we've got Jenny working on it, we've got our consultants with Resource Training and Solutions, we've got representatives from our two largest bargaining units, all part of the process. One more time, I have to say thank you to Jenny and to Lori Elfrin. It's no small amount of work going out there and putting all that together, and more than anything, trying to stay on top of this changing and evolving legislation.
Is it a yearly process?
Two or three years? Two years. Yeah, every two years now, we'll have to go back out, so.
Okay.
Also related to bids, kind of interesting note, we, last time, it's been a while since we went over bids on garbage and recycling. I believe that's a three-year, right? And so this is our time, and we put out the bids, and no one bid.
No one?
No. So I bring that to the board's attention, because I think it calls to light some things we can do on our, on our end to be a little less labor-intensive for the vendors that provide it, or they just charge us a lot more. So we're bringing in a vendor we've been working with for the last three years to do some walkthroughs and to ask for some consultancy on, well, where should we be taking some steps to make this less costly? Most schools are built with loading docks, and you can use large dumpsters, trucks drive in three times a week, don't drive away. That's not how we're set up here. We're very labor-intensive for our trash and recycling vendors, and so we're gonna have to look at how we can make it a little more efficient and drop down some of that cost. And I expect, when we do get to some bids, that they'll be a bit higher than they've been for the past couple of years.
Who's our current vendor?
Ms. Wolter, patient.
Since we've had, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kurt.
Since we've had no bids, and our current contract has expired, could we not entertain, I mean, there are two prominent vendors in this area. Could we not entertain the same activity with the other vendor as well?
We certainly will be. We just wanted, for a start, just what can we do?
Yeah, and I'm suggesting that we turn this into a, you know, a career for everyone, but I'm saying that if we're gonna go through that routine with our current, well, our soon-to-be-expired vendor, that we give the same chance to the other vendor to do the same.
Yep, yep, we can. And part of the RFP or bid process that I would hope we're moving towards is a more obvious and systematic recycling program, and some things that are, give us better stewardship of the RFP living. So we're working through that for that same reason.
Yeah, and that, both, either one of them, like, have great suggestions, that one or the other may be geared towards or otherwise more...
We'll certainly reach out to Pequot.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, yep. And they've been wanting our business for a while, so it really surprised us that no one bid. It was kind of like, oh, what's going on here?
Well, that'll get covered when we contact them, so, I'm sure.
On a similar note, Farmer School, conversations have been going on, and I wanna just update the board on this. Bob McLean from Hunt Utilities and the Initiative Foundation, I have been in conversations about Farmer School, and their desires is part of their mission as an organization at Happy Dancing Turtle and Hunt, to get some of that going in Pequot Lakes and also up in Pine River. So there's a good dialogue and partnership going on there. We'll meet in mid-June with some of our brighter friends that are already down the road on this, and start looking into how we can work collaboratively with Pine River. Makes a lot of sense for us to be collaborative and group some of our efforts there, so.
Isn't there some funding out there too, if you put in a break?
We're looking at a USDA grant, but we're just not quite there yet, so that's on the horizon, I think, at some point. And other, that's just one, yeah.
But is this deal with food resources, local food resources?
Correct, yeah. It's how to purchase more locally.
Oh, that's what you're doing? Okay, I thought about, what I saw, I'm...
No, no, go ahead, Kurt.
I saw, in a recent word, where if we look at adding an egg-related curriculum component, if there's funding.
There is funding for that. Little Falls is taking advantage of that in a big way.
Yeah, that's the one I, I saw.
Yep. I haven't been a dancy about that, because adding another elective senior is...
Suddenly gonna pop in, root teachers and things, too, I think, so.
And then last but not least, for our board members, I just wanna make sure I'm aware of our detailed plans for graduation as a board. I know that Kim Valerie, Mike, and Susan are planning to hand out diplomas and shake hands. So are the rest of you coming or not coming? I just wanna make sure I know. You will be there?
Yeah, I totally agree.
Okay, coming? Okay, so we'll have all seven board members there, note, and we'll have four of you handing out diplomas, so.
Where do we meet?
At school office, it'd be great.
Okay.
Large food.
So a half hour early, or whatever?
Yeah, that'd be great, half hour.
Six-thirty-ish?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Perfect. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
No, and that's quite a bit, so thank you very much for that. Let's see, under C of number four would be technology planning report by CTC IT. And Ty, are you gonna give that?
I am.
So come on up, and...
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll give a little introduction.
Yeah, please do.
And I'm gonna let Ty rock and roll with the actual presentation. For our teachers and staff that are in the room and our public, what we have just wrapping up here is a process where we wanted to make sure we were getting the most bang for buck in what we invest in our technology support services. We've been in a great relationship with CTC IT for the past three years, but with that contract coming due, it was time to make sure that we're pulling each other, both of us accountable to holding up our end of the bargain, and to see if there's another way of looking at things, things that we're not seeing that we need to see. So we brought in a competitive vendor, NJPA, and had them do a complete network audit, security audit of our system, excuse me, and then sat through, and then CTC had the same opportunity to audit our system and sit down with us and share their approach to the next five years in Pequot Lakes. And I felt that was a very timely question, because this board has put together a strategic plan calling for personalized learning by the year 2020, which in my mind means an awful lot of digitized curriculum that we can personalize, but then there's things that has to happen in order to pull that off. If we have teachers, and this is our current reality, if we have teachers at our secondary level in all four core subject areas that are moving towards digital curriculum, meaning textbooks are online, and we don't have a way for the student to get to that textbook or to get to that web-based resource, because they don't have a device, well, then it's like not giving the student a textbook. That doesn't work. We have to close that gap somehow. So knowing we have a lot of questions to answer over the next three to four years, it was timely to have a couple vendors come in and say, "Here's where you're at. Here's where you need to go in the next couple of years. Here's our recommendations," and then tease them apart and see what we can get. My recommendation is under action items later in your agenda, and that is to approve a three-year contract with CTC IT to provide our support services in our district. It looks a little bit different than we've done in the past, because our Level One tech support employee left us recently, which CTC has been backfilling three days a week. But part of this bid was, you'll be responsible for that, both vendors. Take us, give us a sense of how that will look and feel. So both organizations did speak to that. I'm grateful to Ty and Jamie, Jamie's, Ty's counterpart from CTC IT, for the time they put in this. And I'm gonna ask Ty just to kind of take it away and walk through your recommendations and all that, and then board members can answer.
Fine.
Yep.
Go ahead, Ty.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you. The purpose of this presentation is to give a summary, only a brief, of where we've come for the last few years, and then look more in-depth at a go-forward strategy, where we go from here. Before looking at where we've been, I just wanna gloss over quickly, the team at CTC IT is a well-rounded team. A lot of times, I think even we in our own team forget the capabilities that we have, but within our team, we have over two hundred years of combined network experience. We work with many school districts in Minnesota, Iowa, and Nebraska. We've got a vast background in IT strategy, both in the systems, operating models. We have extensive experience in health test workflow management, and we have some select team members, in addition to having various certificates and certifications through Cisco and Microsoft, we have a couple select team members who have deep security background and highly security infrastructures for the Department of Defense and global one-thousand organizations. That being said, when we first approached you, or were approached by you in 2012 to kind of give an analysis of your systems, we presented you with something that was called a capability and maturity model, which is outlined in slide three here. And basically, there's five steps to how your organization can operate from an IT standpoint. And the first level of that would be an ad hoc, where it's a very reactionary phase. There aren't really any repeatable processes. Everything is kind of done by the seat of your pants. Then there's a repeatable stance after that, where processes are largely dependent on individuals. Things work, but there's a single point of failure in many cases. And then, as you get higher than that, you have to find processes that aren't so much reliant on one individual, as the organization as a whole, making a more holistic approach to things, all the way to a managed approach, which means there's standard processes, there's metrics to measure those processes, and then if you're really running at high-octane full speed, you're gonna run at an optimized approach. To be quite frank with you, education will probably never have the funding to run at an optimized approach better than who you are. So our goal is to bring us forward from an ad hoc standpoint. And really, that's kind of what we came in at. In 2012, there wasn't a lot of government, there was certainly nothing really repeatable with that. There was very little strategy and planning going on. IT management was, was for naught, for lack of better words. Operations were okay, but a lot of them were reliant on certain processes, and performance and stability was questionable at best. Costs I have on here were high. I don't know if they were so much higher that there wasn't really a plan for what was going on, but I'm looking forward. That being said, we've come a long way. The schools administration, the curriculum coordinator, the technology integrationists, they're main conduits in IT management. We have a much better pulse now for vetting out plans, for marching orders. Testing, for the most part, is going really well. We've identified some areas where we can bolster this, but we've really gotten some great visibility into things we can control. There were some items in state testing regarding Pearson that we had no control over this year, but for the most part, what we see control, we have a really good read on how to make that better and fine-tune that to be really streamlined. There's secure backups in place, I'll talk a little bit more about that more later. Security has been approved. We have a really great backbone, and we can build up further if necessary. One of the things that Chris told you is that we did have, or the district did elect to have a second opinion to see where we were at during this course. That vendor stated that the district's systems were in such good condition and such a great platform that they would view this district as the benchmark for the other districts they worked with. And we at CTC IT certainly take that as a very nice compliment, but it also complements the district and the district's technical integrationists and administration as well, that we've taken some really great steps to get to a great place where we have the flexibility now to look forward and continue to the end of the strategic roadmap that you guys came up with last year. We do have adequate wireless in place. It seems that just every year that goes by, the need for that expands a little more, and you have to add a little here, a little there, but overall, that's in a good spot. Obviously, as I alluded to there, student device access has increased. One of the, one of the great things that's happened in the district in our eyes is the addition of the tech integrationist Kevin First. That's been a great conduit into the teaching and faculty, and just really complements his direction that technology needs to go in this district. You know, that being said, there's room for improvement always. You can never get it perfect, and there are some rooms, room for improvement in areas of connectivity specifically that we can work to improve over the coming year.
Mr. Chair, can we ask you a quick, before we get to board on the road, a couple quick?
Sure.
My question is, when you talk about connectivity and you talk about some of these elements, some of these are one connected to the other, right? I mean, my question would be is, we have a system that's connected to our bandwidth of supply, right? I mean, our fiber, is that sufficient, or are we building on top of something that's not?
The bandwidth, in theory, is supposed to be efficient, it should be sufficient. Some of the connectivity processes that we've run to are directly related to our current internet service provider, and the support that we receive through that was less than satisfactory at certain times.
So it's not technical, it's operational now?
Correct, yep.
Okay. So those are things that are, and I guess, and I don't wanna go on, I wanna let you get started. So those are things that are, and I guess, and I don't want to go on, I want to get, let you get to this thing, but is there a fatal flaw? I mean, is there, in what you've just written down, the one that concerned me the most is connectivity. It was, we have connectivity issues that, room for improvement regards to connectivity. So we, do we have all, if we get everything else fixed, do we have all the connectivity bandwidth that we would need to keep building?
To me, yes.
Okay. That's a qualified answer.
Yes.
Because we don't know whether connectivity requirements are gonna be three years from now?
Correct.
Okay, but I understood the capacities of fiber is pretty spectacular.
The capacities of fiber are spectacular, and you are set up to get as much connectivity as you need. You're currently not paying for that, but you could, as it expands, and I'll elaborate on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ty.
So as we look at today, we're in a really good spot. Like I mentioned, and Kurt was probably alluding to it a little bit there, we have the capacity to pretty much go any direction we want to go now. Whatever, whatever we want to pay for, we can do. The caveat to that, of course, is that you're gonna have to pay for it, but you're in a position to do that. Most of what we have right now is define and manage processes, which puts us in a good spot moving forward. As we look at moving forward, now that we've got this great foundation, this great base, things are moving in a positive flow, you know, what does the future look like? How do we get to the 2020 vision that the board outlined for a strategic roadmap? And that's what we're looking at supporting through the administration, through the tech integrationists, through our role. How do we get to that? You as a goal, one of the things that I've noticed in the roadmap is personalized training is an item on the roadmap. It's a very ambitious goal. How are we gonna get to that? Because ultimately, that's going to mean that pretty much every student is gonna need a device at some point to do this stuff. So how do we start to march toward that sort of initiative as we look at, you know, the effective operations, you know, communications, technology interference through all of this? So how, how are we gonna make this work going forward? There is one very obvious thing, we're gonna need to leverage the technology budget to its fullest potential. We're gonna need to allow staff and students to build up a more robust digital curriculum. The structure that has already been started through the tech integrationist role here. And we want to continue to maintain a stable infrastructure so that we can make sure we're enhancing this learning process. Do we need more bandwidth? Do we need more wireless in certain places? Those are decisions that we're gonna have to look at very carefully over the upcoming year and years. And really, now we're in a position where we can move the discussion away from the equipment and we can focus more on the experience, right? How do we get to that personalized learning now that we have what we need to succeed, or at least the groundwork for it? One of the other things Chris mentioned is, we're gonna increase operation Level One support for staff and students to work more efficiently going forward. We recommend that the onsite staff person here be a direct member of CTCIT. That serves two functions. First of all, we serve as a management line resource for that, so it intertwines with what we're doing on the backend pretty seamlessly. And the second part of that is that we create a redundancy through that. So if that individual, for whatever reason, gets hit by a bus, you know, decides that they're going to go on a road trip or get sick or whatever, we have other resources in place so that there's a seamless integration of someone who's always here who always knows your systems and can be helpful and around the world. And obviously, we want to continue professional development offerings for teachers and increase classroom integration. Another great component of that happening, tech integrationists working in and helping with some of those things. From a government's perspective, we certainly need to continue to build a relationship between the tech integrationists, the district administration, and our network team at CTCIT. I think that relationship is really good right now, it's really cohesive, it's working well. But as I said, we can never be satisfied with what we're at. We've always gotta be working on the communication and continuing to improve that. And mostly, we want to keep the vision of the district at the forefront to make sure that the infrastructure is here to support the plan of where we want to be in 2020. And then, as I alluded to earlier, having or helped us support Q Managed by CTCIT, I think that'll really increase our ability to better serve the district. I have here some items for consideration. The first one is bandwidth. One of the things that we do on a very proactive basis is monitor the use of bandwidth within the district and how, you know, how close are we getting? Currently, we have 100 meg connection, which two, three years ago was a very fast connection and still is considered a robust connection. However, now in education, and in particular this district, with what we've done to increase the use of network devices, we've started to notice now that there are times when we are getting close to maxing out that bandwidth. It has not become a problem yet, but at the rate that it's going and expanding, I have on here a range of prices. And the bottom range is the 100 meg that we're at now, and the top range of 3,800 is 300 meg, which is most likely our next logical step that we're gonna have to go to. Do you do it next year? Is year after, I'm not sure that's something that we're gonna have to keep our finger on, but one thing's for certain, it will eventually go up, and we will have to increase the bandwidth here at some point. As to when we do it strategically, we'll have to figure that out and make sure that it's not interrupting the flow of what we want to accomplish here. I do have an asterisk at bandwidth, that is before E-rate, so I'm not sure what it equates out to after E-rate.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, layman's terms, bandwidth, that's the amount of space that we're purchasing or acquiring on the fiber, correct?
Correct. It's the, it's basically the speed at which you can access the internet.
Which drives, which is driven by our ISP servers, or is that a vacuum that's created by our own servers pulling it?
It's provided by the internet service provider and brought to the building, and then the network hardware we've purchased facilitates it out to the different areas of the district.
I get a little crazy, I'll let you go.
Another thing that the district needs to look at this year is probably, well, not probably, they do need to look at another option at firewall. And the firewall that we have in place is, is okay, it's doing its job from a security standpoint, but one of the things that we're going to need to start to do is to shape traffic. In other words, when the internet pipe comes into the building, we're going to need to delegate that now out to certain areas and restrict what some areas are able to use in order to really most efficiently use the internet connection that we have. There are some other benefits to that as well. There's a range on here because there's some different options that we can go about that. And again, it's a matter of leveraging the technology budget to its fullest potential, what's available to us and what we determine between the administration and pulling through staff could be the best use of those funds. We have a great backup system in place. It's getting a little older now, and there's so much more valid options as far as a backup available to us now. Best practices is always to have a good backup, because if you don't have that, I hope I don't explain that too much, why that's important. But, you know, there are a couple different options here that I've spread out that could be available to. And again, it's just gonna be as, you know, as we determine what would be the best option to go about doing this. Wireless infrastructure, whether it's replacing a couple units, adding a couple here, and depending on how the district proceeds over the next five years, it could be anywhere between 10,000 to $30,000 or more in wireless. I need to invest there. Lab refreshes, that's something that we're gonna be looking at. We purchased a lot of technology, we have a lot of labs. You know, it's about $20,000 to $50,000 to replace a lab, depending on what it is. This year, we're not slated to do any of that, but every year, you're gonna have to look at, when is that coming up in the cycle now? You know, one of the things we're trying to evaluate is, is that lab of, you know, Macs, for example, really necessary? Is there an alternative to that? If it is necessary, where do we put it in the cycle? And then the staff refresh as well. I think we'd all agree that it's very important to make sure that the staff has adequate horsepower necessary to do their job. And so we cycle that to the replacement schedule as well. Going forward, there's gonna be some things that we have to look at very carefully. How do we get the one-to-one, or how do we get each student with a device in their hands as a matter of conversation and handover? As things develop in technology, you should always be concerned about security, and that should be really a tireless effort on our part to always make sure that we're doing the best we can on that front. Usage analytics, we've created actually a dashboard here that's in a beta test that we're hoping to deploy this summer that we would plan on releasing a quarterly report for that shows where the bandwidth is being used, what time of days that's being used, how many users do you have on your wired network, how many users do you have on your wireless network? How can we start to document and track these analytics so that over the course of time, we can prepare properly for the future? File readiness, heard a lot about the file over the last couple of years. There's a lot of applications that teachers and faculty are using for that. Of course, there are backups are used for that. What else can we use for that? You know, when is it a good application, when is it not the best interest of the district to do something with? Redundancy, do we have a plan for, if the internet connection goes down, if we lose a server, what are some ways that we can prepare the best way possible for, you know, if an outage does occur? Those conversations need to be continually ongoing. One of the things I put up here is a need for tablets or lack thereof. One of the things we've noticed with a lot of districts is that tablets don't keep using the capacity that they were intended to. Does that mean that no tablets in the district? Maybe not, maybe there's some good application for that, but evaluating things that were geared to be used a lot and maybe didn't quite use in the application that they were intended for, how do we make different decisions going forward and how we make purchases for those things? That's pretty much what I had for you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm sure we do. Anyone in particular?
Well, I've got a couple, but I'm not ready to use a couple.
Well, Kurt, you just go right ahead.
Okay. So going back a little bit before, you talked about we have a good foundation. Okay, then we're gonna try to build this, and that's kind of the journey getting to our objective. And that journey is gonna be expensive as we get to a point. Now, what, I guess my question is, is from a cost perspective, the journey is gonna be expensive getting there, but once we get there, how expensive is the rent? What are we gonna have to get there? And is, are we gonna see this cost curve plateau at some point in time where we reach out to them? Do you hear what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying. I'll answer that by saying that the district actually has front-loaded a good investment into this, so it's not as daunting as you might think it is to get to the stable point. But to kind of expand on where you're going, with cost plateauing, the cost may plateau, but it's probably not gonna be what you think it is. It's probably gonna be higher than you think it is.
Well, and there's always, I mean, there's anomalies, if everything else stays equal. I mean, you got to change the technology, everything, you know, you're reacting to that, I understand.
Well, and the thing with this too is that you have to remember, you make this initial investment, you get up, you get to where you want to go, and technology has a three- or five-year shelf life. So you have to reinvest again. It's, it's making sure you're planning and staying for this. You're not gonna bring technology to a point where it's a less considerable expense.
I understand, but let's hope that every time technology changes, we don't have to go back and revise the foundation, tear it down, and build again and go through that. We don't have to keep going back and forth in a journey.
Correct. The idea here is that we plan a rotation cycle or a roadmap cycle where what we have, we're basically refreshing. We don't have to gut it out and start from the start.
Okay, then my final question, Mr. Chair, is that as you talk about the importance of IP servers and, you know, and our IP service provider, you know, service provider, and our, we don't own our fiber. We're just renting space on our fiber. But I thought we owned our fiber between here and here.
Thank you.
Okay? So in that capacity, real curveball for you. I mean, why aren't, why aren't we our own service provider? I mean, what would it take, and would that make sense? I don't even know if this is a rational question, because I'm getting outside my...
For you to be your own internet service provider would be a capital venture of overwhelming magnitude.
Okay. Okay. So I guess that, you know, because I know some people support their own email addresses and that sort of thing. You know, you've got these organizations that do that.
To actually be an internet service provider based would be millions of dollars.
I understand, because of the nature of the access to the web and that sort of thing. It isn't just because we own our own.
Correct.
Trump to the connection.
Right. Owning your own connection is good, but however, providing the internet out of the connection, that's a different question.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Just a quick comment. I just want to thank you guys. I think whenever it was 2012, I think both of us were there. This was a big leap of faith.
Absolutely.
To switch the way we did business and anytime we make a big change, I think we've all been really impressed. I just want to kind of address the comment you made, Kurt, and the question about technology. I think what's hard about this topic is 10 years ago, we were having very different conversations. So I think we have to stay within the scope of what we're doing, and I think having somebody who's worked with lots of districts does help us in the long run. So, you know, I appreciate that this is on the agenda. I'm glad we're doing a three-year contract, which is always good for you guys, as well as it gives us some stability over the next three years. So, thank you.
And I'll just dovetail for a second. 10 years ago, we had instructors going to Walmart buying motives. I mean, it was, it was pretty random out here.
And then hiding them in the building.
And this district has come a long way, and we have put a lot of, we have put a lot of our constituents, you know, good faith and money into this, and we are, we are up in money at a very high level, so I do appreciate it. It's been a group effort, you know, and there's been a big leap of faith that is paying off every day. So I welcome the report, and if there are no...
Yes, one question, you know, as we're going now, this will be, this will be our second three-year relationship, right?
Well, we've been here three.
So what I, I'm wondering, do you guys have any other sites, any way to just get a systemic measure on kind of user satisfaction as far as for our users? So we can get a feel for, are we getting better, getting worse as we're going forward? So that, you know, it's not gonna all suddenly be a tidal wave that we're, it's a lot better than it was now, but in case we slip backwards, is there a way to measure our user satisfaction? Not necessarily on the student side, but more on the faculty side, so that...
Sure. I understand, I understand. We currently don't have an organized metric of how to track that. However, we do have a help desk ticket system that's run through the district. And in theory, anyone who has any sort of technical problem for the help desk is to submit a ticket through that help desk queue. That help desk is something that the administration has access to, as well as the tech integrationists. So they can kind of visually see what's happening on a day-to-day basis with those ongoing items. And if it weren't positive, that would be called to our attention. I don't have a specific metric on...
So perhaps a metric measuring number of new tickets and how many, what your backlog and...
I understand what you're looking for, you know, when it comes to we take our help desk tickets and we graph them. And just so you can see. Plus, plus repeating purposes, if we kind of have a general idea. So maybe for the board, along with some of those other metrics we're looking for from the superintendent, we can add that up there just to have a high-level overview.
Well, how hard would it be to connect the survey to either, and I mean, to give us a little satisfaction of it? Brandon, is that what you're looking for?
No, you know, something kind of with, Ty was just talking about. Well, that's the way I measure mine.
We would have the capability to get you a ticket count and ticket resolution and time of resolution on tickets.
Like a ticket backlog. Right, just something, just from a high level, just to, so we can see what the trend is. Especially now with you guys being our Level One support. That'd be helpful, because I don't think we ever maintained internally that type of information, did we?
We didn't, but what I will say, and this is very non-factual, at some of our, what do we call the meeting? We'll meet with staff.
Meet and confer.
I can tell you that that is no longer a top priority as it was for many years. So that's very non-factual, but I mean, we definitely refer a lot of us about support. But I think, I think just high-level statistics.
I would be, I'd be happy with that too.
Well, I appreciate Brandon, because, you know, he wants a measurement, and I think we are owed one, you know, at some point. And I don't know how often it would be reported, but it's a very good idea to just measure going forward.
Yeah, that's an easy number for us to provide you with as a board. We do track it. I'll tell you, the ticket system rolled out last fall, a year ago, my first year here. And that was baptism by fire. Yeah, we were running in that, running a constant run of 100 to 200 tickets in the hopper. But we also had just onboarded all these Chromebook carts and all this hardware, and it was the end of the construction project, and that thing rolls less than five at any time now. And so that correction, my mid-year last year, we had that going on. Another thing on perceptions I find fascinating about technology is, we get a blip on our connectivity and it's like, wow! Now, and I kind of chuckle, because, you know, we've had a couple blips this year. Last year, I... Last year, when I started hearing the flaw, holy smallie, we were out like every other week, and we were just trying like crazy to figure that stuff out. So we're so much better now in terms of our percentage of time up.
So it's sensitive.
Now they're mad, you know, because they're used to it always being there.
Well, that's a good metric.
It's a good, you're right. It's a good, it's a good thing to step back and go, oh. Because it used to be like, oh, here we go again, right? Well, now we actually get upset that we lose our connectivity because it's such a constant. So we've come, we've come so far.
Well, here's your metric. Once every 90 days, just pull a plug for 30 seconds.
No, no.
Get a reading. Well, no.
We'll create a dashboard.
Right. About a half hour before testing.
Cool. Everybody, everybody awake out there? Cool.
They'll all call Tracy, because she's the testing coordinator.
Well, not to bog us down any longer than we have to be, but what about the testing? What is going to be the end of that situation or the outcome?
There won't be one, and that's something that, I hate to say it this way to our staff, but when I started teaching and we were doing basic skills tests, and then we started stepping into online tests, it was a train wreck then. That was 12 years ago. It's still a train wreck. It's going to continue to be a train wreck. The public will get mad, the legislature will switch vendors, we'll go through this again. It'll be in every other year cycle, and just get used to it and make a second lesson plan because it's not going to go right the first time, right? You know, that's where we're at, and...
Well, so we, we had the kerfuffle. Were we as a district able to complete our testing? Okay, so I'm seeing a nod.
We're all done.
And obviously, it was a head-scratcher and a hair-puller, to say the least, I'm sure for those who...
And our staff were great, and Tracy was great, and Cassie was like crazy, and CTC swung in, helped them early. On the front end, it's always the front end of a first run with a new vendor. That's always your dogma, that first two weeks thing. And so they were in scrambling, getting carts and labs updated with another refresh than we were told to. But once we got that going, then, then the only issues left were the Pearson pipeline issues, and that was their issue.
Right. No, I get it. A lot of my questions, I'll just hold till we get into the actual agreement discussion, but we have governance of tech integrationists, district admin, and you. But then, isn't there the fourth player too, which is our local internet provider? I mean, how do they? Are they our option in this area?
I was getting at that.
That's a good question. That is a good question. They are not the only option you have. CTC actually can provide the internet pipe to your district, which is a conversation that we've been having as well, because then we could manage that, start, finish, all the way through. So there are two options.
So we would eliminate actually the 3B as far as the governance team? And I know that discussion now, I know that discussion is ongoing, I feel, but nothing else.
It's currently a discussion in hand.
Yes, go ahead, Brandon.
If I may, and some of that discussion is, what's the right strategy for that? If we need to move from 100 meg to 300 meg to eventually a gig 10 years from now, you know, what's our long-range strategy for that? And Ty talked about bandwidth sculpting or sculpting traffic. What are your levers to lock people out of streaming Pandora when teachers are actually trying to teach across the hall? You know, how do we move and delegate traffic to mission-critical things such as testing, student information, and payroll? When things are getting chewed up by something that's maybe less mission-critical?
Sure.
So there's vehicles internal, such as filters, to do that. But one, one thing they've mentioned is actually two internet providers as an option, and that way you have an extra set of redundancy. So you'd have two ISPs, and maybe 100 meg with one and 300 with another.
Interesting proposition.
And when one falls, you can push bandwidth through the other, at least to limp through the day. You know, so there's a lot of high-level engineering decisions to make, and that's why we pay people with a lot more brains than me in this area to do that. So yes, we have more than one provider possible, and how we step through that is going to be talked about at length.
Brandon?
Well, this holds for me personally, too. And is charter not a viable option for us on this side of the highway?
Well, yes and no. The, currently charter is the connection into the school, but it's not sold through charter. It's sold through...
TDS.
Well, CMR or C...
CM what?
CMR DC.
CMR DC. And it's resold through them, and they're a government co-op. And basically, they're acting as the ISP using charter's connection. It's a little complicated to explain, but...
Yeah, that's fine. Obviously, as you're looking at it and considering it, for me, I deal with the TDS issue and our limited resources there, and I'm trying to figure that out myself. So I guess I'm, I'll talk you off on it.
All right. Anything else for Ty?
Thank you, Ty.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ty.
Well, we're up here. Let's decide. Okay. So we're on to, I'm sorry. I'm bogged down in my paper here. We're on to consent agenda. Although the board action is required, all items listed are considered to be routine and will be acted on by one motion with no separate discussion. In the event one of us wants to discuss an item, we could remove it for separate consideration. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Brandon and Valerie, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Just a, just a brief note on this. It's been suggested to me by one other board member, and I concur, that maybe we'll have a brief discussion at a work session about maybe taking one of the items out of the consent agenda again. But we'll let that discussion play out. It's nothing major. I guess what I'm going to be looking for in the next month or so is just some feedback about how we feel our meeting is moving along or not, and if there is any change that anyone would like to see. So I'm just giving you a quick heads up, and we'll put it on the work session for probably two. Okay, moving on then. Action items. CTCIT agreement, I'm looking for a motion to approve the service agreement with CTCIT for the period of June 5th, 2015 through June 30th, 2018, as presented.
Someone?
Kim? Second by Derek, sorry. So we have the motion. We're not looking for a vote, we're looking for discussion.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
That came out, came out of the presentation. Long-term, you know, there are a couple of things. Big picture, I try to remember that as we move to a digital platform, we're replacing textbooks as the concept, and so the money that we have always budgeted for textbooks now goes to a different platform, or that's the, the general idea. I mean, I realize we probably always have to have some textbooks. So budgetary-wise, though, when I was looking at the one slide that Ty presented to us, items for consideration and leveraging our tech budget, it looks like we're looking at spending 85 to 100,000 per year for the next three years managing and doing basically necessary maintenance for our systems in order to accomplish the strategic goal. Is that correct?
I'm not trying to answer that. Our tech, our capital tech budget this past, for the past couple of years, has been about $150,000. And out of that, we use that to replace a server if it were to go down, or to, or in some years to refresh a lab, or in some years to buy more access points. It just kind of depends on a replacement cycle essentially in our, on our update cycle. Now, on top of that, there's a technology supply budget, and there's technology staff budget, and that's not reflected anywhere in here, so...
Which part of money does CTCIT's contract payments come out of?
Not out of capital. It will be a service agreement. Out of general fund.
The technology budget.
Basically, replace the staff. The equity out of general fund.
Right. And that's kind of where I'm driving is. So now the, we used to have a director who was in-house, and we used that money basically when we brought on CTCIT. We viewed it as, you know, moving the money we were spending on person to a company or a group of people who would service our needs better moving forward. Same concept here?
Same concept here. And it's actually a wash when we look at the salben of the level-one support person we've had, and the additional cost to the CTC and IT contract for their monthly bill to us. That's, that cost is flat, so we won't see an increase in our service management cost. Does that make sense to folks?
So I guess the other question I have is, these items for consideration, are they items we already budget for, or is it stuff that we would be adding to our current budget and taking from a different, a different source?
Yep, that's a great question. I don't have a magical answer to that. $150,000 a year of capital is essentially our, our current budget to keep us humble. The magical question in the room is, is that enough rolling forward to get our Vision 2020 accomplished? I'd be wrong to try to answer that tonight off the cuff. I can tell you that at our June 1st boardwork session, which is just in two weeks, Kevin First will be there, and we will take a deep dive as a board into looking at that, how do we get devices in the hands of at least secondary students in the next couple of years? Now, I've been reluctant to go there without a good strategic plan. We purposefully stopped and said, no, first we need good curriculum in place. We need a vision for what good instruction looks like. We've got some of those things in, I mean, they're just starting to roll out and gain traction in our staff. So I'm not ready to go to our staff today and say, we're going to level one. We're not going to do that. We're going to, as a board, we're going to wrestle with what's the most fiscally responsible way to wrestle with this, this issue? And then start laying groundwork and traction for next year, two years out, how we want to step into it. Will our current budget suffice? Probably not. However, I will tell you that, again, we're vetting, we're vetting options. We're vetting, do we lease devices? Do we provide economical ways for families to buy into something they'd probably already buy anyway for their kids? Because we do have to keep that cost down as much as we can.
Okay, so here's...
It's a hard question to answer.
Here's really where, where the bottom-line question, I guess, I'm trying to answer, and so vetting this back and forth a little bit helps me. But, you know, I guess, should I be having heartburn over our budget at this point and where we're driving this district too with our strategic plan by 2020? With the thought of digital curriculum? Or should I be like in ulcer state? Or are we in pretty, are we sustainable? Do we anticipate that we're, we're in a sustainable position for the next three years?
Well, that question is broader than technology. I think our, our board, as we've been working on our, on our budgeting process, it's been in front of you on the screen that we're spending a lot more money than we're taking in, and at some point, the fund balance is gone. And we're going to wrestle with that question as a board. And that's not just technology increase costs, that's staff increase costs, that's replacing buses. So it's a bigger question. Will our technology budget need to increase to do our strategic plan? I believe the answer to that is yes, some, but not an astronomical amount. I really think it's quite manageable because we, as Ty said, this board took on really heavy lifting over the last two, three years as part of that bond referendum and some of that and stuff. So very good moves. But I think the bigger question you're asking, Director Wong, is, is are we spending more than we're taking in in the big picture? The answer is absolutely we are. And we have to make a correction there, either on the expenditure side or the revenue side. And if we have to cut a whole lot of expenditure, that strategic plan is going to be harder to implement.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Kurt, Mr. Chair, I could dovetail, and that's what I'm trying to get at about, is that, you know, the journey's going to be expensive, but once we get to a point, is that sustainable? And I guess I would argue the fact that I'm comfortable in the fact that we've got an organic perspective on this rather than singular person in the room, because we're bound by the single-person decision moving forward and the recommendations that we have. Now, we've got our organization behind us that can have probably a better, broader perspective, hopefully their, their grasp on technology real-time is more beneficial to us than the reliance of one individual making recommendations to us on our technological capacity.
Right.
You know, we'll, we'll get us, we'll be way more efficient, albeit spending more than we're taking in. We're going to be way more efficient in that process than we would otherwise. Okay, then while I got the room here for the floor, it's a wash from losing Josh to this.
Correct. If you looked at what we were paying CTCIT last year...
Oh, okay, so you're including that in there, too?
And then added...
Okay, because I...
Mr. Gibbons' salary and benefit cost. That total is the same as what we're going to pay CTC going forward.
Okay, good. Because I, I mean, I asked 90, this is 90-plus thousand dollars a year.
But it's fairly well explained in the Friday board notes and, and in your background package, too. This is a wash. My question about that, although, with the three-year contract, what if another Josh Gibbons comes, comes around? Would we prefer to get our level-one help from a staff member? Or, you know, once we enter into this contract, which is fine, I'm good. But, you know, do we then just consider a CTC our level-one tech person? Is that what we're buying into for three years?
That's what we're buying into for three years.
Okay, and that's the long and the short of it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Oh, hang on a second, Kurt. I wasn't...
Oh, I wasn't either.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Buy your own, keep going.
Done, Kurt.
Well, my point was, having to run through this legal, and that was exactly, I did see it in the board notes, Mike, but the fact is that that is the very same question. I looked at the termination language and everything else. We've had legal purview on this document.
Not this one, it's a repeat of the one we did...
That's the other question, okay.
It's a repeat of the exact same document.
Does it have an element of specific performance in there? So we're bound for three years. I mean, here's termination provisions.
There is termination.
That's exactly what I was going to get to, Mike, I apologize.
Well, it's okay.
But that's the other question I was going to ask.
There is, there are termination provisions in the contract. I'll also tell you that there hasn't been a moment in my work with CTCIT for two years where when we needed extra help, that we weren't paying for it.
Absolutely.
They didn't come in and just do it and not charge us for it. That's happened numerous times in the two years. And I know, I know that that relationship is good enough that if we had to re-talk, we could, and we would.
No, Kim, go ahead.
I just am going to add a final point just for the history, because I know it's a wash today, but when we did this a few years ago, it did save the district money. So ultimately, it saved the district money, and it's running more efficiently. So I think, I think we need to remember that, and I also think we need to remember, we signed the same contract three times, just for three years.
No, and I'm very, personally, I'm very comfortable with it, and I'm very, I have a lot of gratitude towards our vendor here today. I don't even worry about the termination side of this contract. I think this is a good deal for this whole district. Anybody else, though? Yeah, you have. I am looking then, if we're done with discussion, I am looking for a vote. So all in favor to approve the service agreement with CTCIT, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. I think there's two winners. Thank you, Ty.
Yes, thank you.
I'm moving on to B, non-renewal of non-certified staff. So I'm looking for a motion here. The following? Yes. Do I need to read these? Second. Second, okay. I've got a little out of control here, I apologize. This type of thing is done every year based on need. And then in the fall, we revisit this situation as well. We do this every year. So it was... To renew, to non-renew the following non-certified staff for the 2015-16 school year. Professional, her professionals, Winter Hopson and Jordi Headkey. So I'm looking for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion passes. Moving on to C, revised 2015-2016 school calendar. Looking for a motion to adopt the 2015-16 school calendar as revised. Kim? Second?
Second.
Susan? Any discussion?
Go ahead, Joe. Now, really the only significant change that is in this is that first through fourth graders are going to school on a Tuesday and Thursday after... I'm sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday after...
Later.
Maybe.
That is correct.
And it's only, it's only a deviation from years past. So that's something that will be important to get off to families ASAP as they're finding their, their summer travel plans and whatnot.
Basically, we'll start in September.
Good point. Any, any other discussion, Kurt? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, the motion carries. D is the first reading of policy 427 workload limits for certain special ed teachers. This is a new mandatory policy presented for a first reading. Two additional readings are required at subsequent meetings. Therefore, no action is necessary at this meeting.
Yeah, and may I just, the board members know, a new statute was passed requiring school districts to have this policy. So we have to have it by law. MSBA put out a model policy and I think it's a good one. Our co-op, Paul Bunyan Co-op supports this model policy. And you also need to know as a board that we are already living up to what the policy and the statute asked for. We were doing it long before we were required by law and by policy. So thanks to the Paul Bunyan Co-op for doing a great job providing us with the information that makes us compliant with this.
Yeah, and as, as president of that committee or no chip?
Your chip.
There are no presidents. I have been educated over the last couple of years into what is actually going on and it is phenomenal. I mean, great stuff. When, well, who was it? Geinert? Came here two or three years ago, you know, I'm skeptic, I get it. But we are getting so much bang for our buck and there are so many good people associated with this that it's a wonderful thing for our district and six or seven other citizens in it. Could you handle the meeting dates, announcement and meeting dates? I can't get that up here, so... You have it?
I'm on.
Okay. Upcoming meetings on Thursday, the 21st at 4 o'clock. Our negotiations teams will be sitting down with our teachers again in the media center. June 1st, 6:00 PM, a board work session in the media center. June 15th, a regular board meeting at 6:00 PM here in the gathering room. And then for July and August, we're not doing work sessions on the first meeting of first week of the month. We are just having our regular meetings July 20th and August 17th. And if we need to schedule a work session, we'll just tack it onto that meeting. So we'll probably start with the work session and then move into a business meeting. That gives you two less meetings in July and August.
And then just as another reminder, on Friday, May 29th at 6:30 in the high school offices, please show up, get your flower and go out and have some fun with the graduates. This is my last one. I almost started crying there, okay. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn, please.
A motion, second.
Second, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sure. The meeting is adjourned at 7:15. And thank you all very much.
I'm excited.